Good evening. This is the regular August RTM meeting, August 13th, 2025. The time is 7:08. Call the meeting to order. I'll pass it over to the town clerks to give the roll call, please.
Representative Adams?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Casper?
Here.
Crockett Hubbard? Dean Chimbra?
Here.
Dee Graffinright?
Here.
Dudden?
Here.
Fitzgerald? Fritchy?
Here.
Fox?
Here.
Brickman? Gardner Autumn?
Here.
Gardner Michael?
Here.
Gibbs? Hume?
Here.
Johansson? Kayden?
Gibbs is here.
Thank you. Kayden? Linder? Locke? Massett? Madder?
Here.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
No.
Oh.
No, you're good.
Okay. McElroy?
Here.
Norman? Norris? Obrey?
Here.
Porella?
Here.
Powers Kristen?
Here.
Powers Sean?
Here.
Pulaski?
Here.
Swindell?
Here.
Umraz? Beesey Williams? Watson? Wells?
Here.
Whitney? And J.C.?
I am here.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, all right. We've got a quorum. Thank you so much. Moment of silence since flag. You can all stand and rise. Flag behind. Oh, yeah, you don't have to turn around. There's one up front, too.
Oh. Moment of silence.
I'll leave the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, go to item C, approval of the minutes. Two zero two five dash seven one four, the July ninth, 2025 RTM meeting minutes. If there's no additions, omissions, revisions, or such, we will move the minutes. And we don't have to approve them or anything. We're just, we're good with it. Is there anything from the body? All right. Minutes are approved. Item D, public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to no more than five minutes or less as directed by the moderator, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the town of Groton. Excuse me, the moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Thank you. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or by the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record. If you wish to speak virtually, please register by emailing council@groton ct.gov no later than 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Mr. Burt, are there anybody online? Okay. All right, I have one resident listed here, Frank Norowski. If you're here, if you can come up, speak the lectern.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Norowski. Sixty Kings Highway in Groton, and a resident. Moved here in seventy-eight, been here ever since. I'm here tonight to speak about the impending bond numbered twenty twenty-five six thirty-five for the design and construction of the athletic fields. Full disclaimer, I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I am the chairman of the Athletic Fields Task Force. Been working on this project for five years now, and we're to the point now where we are actually trying to get this pushed to the referendum. Over the last five years, we've dug under every stone, talked to every person in the town of Groton that runs any port of athletic fields, from outside agencies, Electric Boat, Pfizer, every youth organization in town, all the, all the high schools, obviously. And what, what we have now is a presentation with the help of the architects. We have hired Frost and Kent that have put together pictures, designs, cost. And the most important thing is the cost factor, right? So, over the years, everyone, I've never spoken to a person who doesn't think this is a necessary need. Not one. You can argue about parts of it, you can argue things, but the fact that our, what our children are out there doing, whether they're in athletic fields, or with the band, or cheerleading, or any other thing, it's just, it's, the high school has been put off for, again, I moved here in seventy-eight and I played on that field, and it hasn't changed. And I believe, well, I've been told since nineteen sixty it hasn't changed. So what I'm here for is to, to let you know the need is there, the people that I speak to understand the significance of the lack of the fields that we have. We're not only poor in what we do, what that high school has right now is ADHD noncompliance. That high school was built with no, females didn't play athletics. There's no place for anyone to just change up there. I know I'm beating a dead horse for some of you, I know you, some of you have known this, but I just want you to understand the need. And I'll give all of your homework assignments in the next month. Go up to the high school, just go walk the track two times, and look at the stands. And if any of you have children graduating and from Fitch High School this year, or friends or family, you think you want to go and send those bleachers, you let me know. Because they should be abolished. They can't be used. They shouldn't be used. I don't know how to use them. We can't fix them. No one will fix them because it's too bad. So anyway, and, but the most important, most important thing over the last couple of months has come out is the cost factor, which was provided by the town manager's office with the help of him and his, and his staff. And this is, what we'll be doing with this referendum is a, Phase One of a four-phase project. Four times we're going to be doing this. It's about, Phase One is, I think his estimation is about seventy dollars a year for an average homeowner in the town of Groton, which I believe is set at, like I can read it, two hundred and fifty thousand is the average home value. So, seventy dollars a year increased in taxes. This is going to be, I'm just going to assume it's going to be that for all four phases. We're going to, what we're going to do is do Phase One, next year Phase Two, Three, Four, spread out the payments, make it easier on everybody, hopefully. So, as, as a, as a resident, I know the need, I feel the need every day. My grandkids are out there running around, and it's just deplorable. So your homework assignment is walk the track. Second homework assignment is go to any other local high school and walk around there and let me tell you what, and what you think of that. And you'll be, I mean, somewhat shocked and amazed if you don't do it already. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Wait for questions or anything? No. I'll take them. No, when we get to the agenda, when we get to the agenda, if there's any need, we will, we'll let you know. Okay. Thank you. All right, is there any other members of the public that wish us to speak? All right. Once I give it over, it's it. Okay. All right, thank you. Received communications, just to let everyone know, I received some notifications. Watson, Norris, Fitzgerald, and Crockett Hubbard are not available this evening. I don't really have any more than that. So is there any other communications that the body would like to share? Yes, Representative Powers.
I had a, I had an email that came from someone in support of the athletic fields.
Oh, yes, that's right. I think we all received that.
Yeah, I think we all did.
Can you just mention the gentleman's name? Because I don't have access to my email right now.
I'll find it. Just got to give me a minute here.
I believe we received that last week, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. I think, Manager Burt sent it out to us.
Yeah, who was, who was that gentleman?
Miranda Kraus, Eighteen Ocean View Avenue.
Kraus, yes, correct. That was the, that was the one that we all got.
Thank you.
Communications, but thank you, in support of athletics fields. Yes, Representative Casper.
Yeah. I had a phone call from a Mystic resident. And she expressed a little distress. She's part of a group that's trying to protest ICE. And she made an inquiry of the police department, I think probably through the chief, if he could speak in a public forum, probably the library or the, or here, about behavior that they should be using and still protest, but not to get arrested. I don't know if that could be referred to the Public Safety Committee or what, but it was just guidelines for protesters to, to keep from getting arrested.
Okay, I'm sure we can, we can pass it over to Town Manager Burt and get that information disseminated.
Basically, just don't block people's thoroughfare. You can't block the roads, you know. That's, that's the essential thing. We don't have any permitting requirements. You know, if you expected a lot of people, you know, it'd be good to know so we keep an eye on things. But I'll, I'll touch base with the chief.
Thank you, Rep. Casper. Are there any other communications? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the report of the town manager. Turn it over to Town Manager Burt.
Good evening. First, the financials. Preliminary fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-five, unaudited at this point, is approximately thirty-seven point four million, which is twenty-three point eight percent of the FYE twenty-five adopted budget. Final numbers won't be available till around the end of the year. For this current year, we've allocated or approved two point five million of usage from the fund balance, so that'll come off of that thirty-seven point four million. So that will reduce. And we've also set aside some funds for the Groton Long Point Bridge at Palmer's Cove. I'll give, I'm going to give a little update on that in a couple of minutes. Contingency Fund was allocated three hundred thousand, we're early in the year, so we've not spent any of that yet. Capital Reserve Fund as of June thirtieth, twenty-five, was four point six million. However, about two point six million has been allocated to be used for the upcoming, this current budget, so it's really about two million of unallocated right now. Moving into the update, you know, we'll be talking about the athletics fields project, but, so I'm not, I wasn't going to touch on that, but I'll hold off on that. Let's see, District Four, the town's been working hard trying to find more park space for District Four. There's general agreement that, that more is needed in the area. So, one, me and Mark Berry, the Parks and Market Director, have been working with the Board of Ed. Two, create, if you go behind Mary Morris, there's actually a nice level field that's not used for anything currently. We're working with them, and I'm making that hopefully an actual formal town park. Things look good for that. Mark and I met with, we've met with Val for Beatty. We're talking about trying to access three or four of their parks or building on some of their land. And then we're also just started working, talking with Fairview about the potential of some sort of playground. Let's see, Groton Long Point Bridge Road, there's two bridge projects, if you may recall. You've got the Groton Long Point Road Bridge over Palmer's Cove. That's currently scheduled for the fall of twenty-seven through the spring of twenty-nine. And you also have the Groton Long Point Road over Amtrak Bridge, fall of twenty-six through spring of twenty-eight. Now, Palmer's Cove, the town does not have a cost during that, other than potentially a little utility work. We were able to get into a program that covered our full cost. There will be costs though with the Amtrak Bridge one. A little bit of public works thing, Sutton Park Works, as you know, there's a lot of work pending for out there. We have that out to bid, bids due August twenty-first. We just finished replacing all the windows at Human Services. We just finished replacing the roof for the golf course maintenance building, and the siding should be done next week, replacing that. Let's see, we're working with Probate Court to come up with a new design to make things a little more safe in there. Let's see, we just received bids for painting, repairing doors and painting Groton Ambulance Building. Those all came, we came, the low bid came within budget, so we're looking good on that. The, we just started painting the Jabba Smith House, and that should be done in the next week or two. And then we're getting ready to works, do, begin work soon on the aquatic road, Village Lane intersection stoplight. And just so you know, there'll be some pavement work done, but the actual span poles, there's a twenty-two week lead-in time for that. So you're going to see some concrete work, and then you're going to see it stop for a few months, just so you're aware. You, you may have seen that same thing happen with DOT work, where the, the poles took a while. Quaker Farm Road Bridge, we just received some engineering on that. We're reviewing it, but the intent is to bid it in the next couple of weeks. And then bids would be due either mid to late September. So hopefully we'll be moving soon on the Quaker Farm Road Bridge replacement. Let's see. And the paving of Shooville Road begins next week. Shoulda Castle Golf Course, well, that'll probably touch later. I'll hold, I'll leave off on that. And that's all I have.
All right. Got some questions from the body here. Representative Obrey, followed by Powers S.
I know I nag you about this, but let's see, outlook on the sign for the intersection of Route one and one seventeen. Was that on your list?
Yes, it actually is. Which will be, and as usual, my report will be, I don't go over everything in my report here, but I do actually have an update in the, in it. Let's see, there was supposed to be an RFP. I've actually got to double check this. The RFP for the wayfinding, it took a long time to get DOT approval. As you may know, the council, we had a sign up there, somebody ran through it, destroyed it. The council decided they wanted to take a fresh look at what was on that sign, as well as some lead-in signs leading down one seventeen to there. Once they finished their work, which took a while, the DOT took a long while, we did receive approval on the language. That should be hopefully out to bid now, if not, it's going very soon. The hope is that they'd be installed mid to, mid to late fall. That's the hope. So, it is moving along.
Thank you very much.
Is it, is it going to be steel reinforced, so we can avoid any crashes?
It's better the sign fall down than the car get crushed.
Indeed, indeed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Manager Burt, with the, the seawall, do we have an update in the city with the seawall as to what's going on and when the completion date might be?
That'd be better left for the, we've, we're not really actively engaged in that, so. Other than just to mention, I think most people know, we did, we did apply, help them apply for nine, I think about nine million dollars in grants through a community infrastructure fund grant. The reason we did it is the city is not eligible for that funding. They have to work with us. So we worked with our staffs, worked together, we submitted a grant application. So I don't think we'll know for at least a couple of months, if not a few, so.
Thank you.
And again, I would, if you had any items that you would like to bring up, I would say direct them to Mayor Keith Hedrick right now, or the City Council, and they can give you some information on that. If you would like me to look into it, I could, I could look into it for you as a representative of District Two. It's in my district. All right. I'll get back to you on that, okay? Yes, Representative Porella?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the town manager. Do we have an update on a couple of items? The, I brought up about the council meeting with the Pfizer property, what's happening with that? What's been decided with the Department of Environmental Protection for the possible sale of any properties, limiting that to commercial and/or industrial use only? And then the second thing is a crosswalk at the intersection of Wayne Road and Long Hill with all the new businesses coming up on the eastern side of the road. The residents are very upset. They want more protection. Apparently someone was killed on that stretch, and a second person was killed down where the, the new oil facility is, where Goodwill is, and they're very upset about this. The other question is the median divider. I've asked for about a year and a half. I've called the state, and I've gotten no response back. I did talk to John Reiner. He says, keep calling. I'd like your office to please call them and get that cleaned up. And I'd also like to refer that a possible median divider be put all the way down portions of Long Hill Road because people are literally going on their skateboards in the middle of four-way traffic and harassing people going up the hill. I live very close to that area, and I'm very, very concerned that you're going to have another fatality. And I don't think the drivers are slowing, going, slowing down. And this particular resident wants a police presence there. They did it after the person apparently was killed, but they need to do it again. And they need to do it again and again till this is under control. You've got several businesses coming up. The other section that's dangerous is near the, which, by the way, flash car wash is excellent. I have to say, I was apprehensive about it, but I think that's a good location. However, they need to slow the traffic down. We've got several intersections going on throughout the town now, and the police, you know, sometimes they're patrolling it, and sometimes they're not, and I know they have a lot of calls, which brings me to another thing we'll talk about later.
I can agree with Representative Porella on the, the traffic with bicycles and other things. I, I was driving here, and there was an individual on an electric scooter going down the hill as traffic's going up, and he's on his phone, like, on the hand. I, I don't know how you do it. It's, I can barely walk and chew gum at the same time. So it's dangerous.
So in terms of Pfizer, that's better explained by Mayor Hedrick. I was notified that the state did approve their requested plan, but other than that, I'm not actively engaged on that one. Mayor Hedrick's much more involved, was much more involved with that. Crosswalk, I think that's coming back onto our Traffic Authority agenda. I don't remember you bringing up the median before. If you send me an email, I can put it on the agenda for the Traffic Authority, which I meet in September, I believe. The last one was canceled due to some other ongoing issues. And then in terms of, I can't tell you how many requests we get for police everywhere for traffic, and they do fit in. And it's always going to be whack-a-mole. It's going to be a couple of days here, a couple of days there. It's just what it is with the current staffing, yeah. We get tons of requests, but, so we do what we can. And if you remind us, then we'll go out for a couple more days. But it's, it's not something we can do long-term for one particular spot.
Yes, Representative Burrell?
Yes, I was wondering if we had anything we can do about the basketball court behind the daycare center of Central Avenue. It hasn't been mowed all year. The, we got some kind of maintenance on that actual basketball court itself. It's not safe for the people who are playing on it. The nets on the backboards were, have been rotted away for a couple of years now. And like I said, and it's so overgrown right now that you can hardly play on the court. Can you take a look at that?
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Is there any other members that have questions for the town manager? All right. Thank you, Mr. Burt. Economic Development, again, we're going to talk, are you, we're doing a meeting, or you're doing a?
She's going to do a presentation for Economic Development and later for Pleasant Valley.
All right, wonderful. And again, for those who don't know, this is, Ms. Piazza works in the planning and economic development.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, and John's pulling it.
It's going to be up here.
Perfect. Oh, there we go. Good. Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. I was back here in January to introduce myself and my team and give you an update. So I'm back for another one. And I just have a few brief slides for you, not on everything we do, but just some of our major project updates. And then, as Mr. Moderator mentioned, I'll talk a little bit later on a different agenda item with an update on our town's disposition process for Pleasant Valley. Everything tonight is informational. There's no action required from you. It's just an overall update for you. Is it possible to scoop that, that window? Great. Sorry, it's hard to coordinate this. Those slides are different than mine. All right, so just a quick refresher for our team. We're in the Office of Planning and Development Services, and we work on economic and community development. I think sometimes our community development isn't as talked about as much, and they're pretty complimentary. All of the work that we do is guided by a lot of planning documents and our elected officials. And that's what guides us with what we do, our plan of conservation and development, our economic development strategy. Again, our elected officials, boards, commissions, and residents. And we work to empower the Groton community to create an economic future that realizes our full potential from supporting local businesses to creating housing opportunities to placemaking. In our community development team, administers various grant programs, and these are mostly designed to benefit low and moderate income residents with an emphasis on housing rehab and capital improvement projects. And most of our funding comes through the state, including our development block grants. I think you have to do it. My clicker just stopped working. Sorry, the clicker stopped working for a moment. And now, okay, there we go. Okay. And moving on, so this is, actually, we just had a question about this project. So our wayfinding master plan implementation is moving along. And essentially, as you know, this was created to have a public signage program and establish consistent design style for Groton's informational wayfinding. And we've been working on that process for a while. Manager Burt mentioned the last step we were doing was working for state approvals. And now with our next steps, we have issued a request for proposals, which has been posted, and anticipate that fabrication of the signs coming in the next few months. Sure.
Could you, the two signs on the bottom, could you tell us what was on those?
Let's see, so.
Haley Farm State Park, Paquonic Plains Park, Sutton Park, Left Point State Park, Groton New London Airport, and Paquonic.
And there's actually a little bit more. It's just didn't scroll all the way. There you go. That's the full thing. You're all, it looks like there's an error there. Okay. There we are. Okay, so our pivot grant, we talked to you about this last time. And so this is funded with our ARPA funds, and we did this in two tranches. We were working on the last tranche last time I was here, and we're happy to say that our full hundred thousand has been deployed, helping over eighteen local businesses. This grant was set aside to provide funds to support them in making essential investments, and it can be everything from infrastructure and equipment to technical services, also even preparedness for climate change and flood preparedness. So we're excited that that is out the door. This also had an end-of-year, next-year deadline, and we are way ahead of that as far as the requirements to have the funds spent. And next, ongoing, we have a community conversation series that we do, and this is our, our staff's effort to really connect with folks on the ground, one-on-one, and talk about some of the bigger topics taking place in town. We've done series on Civics 101 and just helping folks understand how government works, in particular, planning and zoning, encouraging, you know, community participation overall, addressing housing needs. And we wanted to invite all of you, if you haven't already seen it online or posted, to our next one, which is next Wednesday, and this is Understanding Your Flood Risk. So it's August twentieth. It's right here at five forty-five, and our team's been working hard to put this together. We have someone coming from deep to speak about, you know, climate change and being ready for floods. ready for floods. And this is for residents and businesses as well. And they'll have tools to help you figure out where you are in the flood zone, what you can do, what insurance opportunities you have, and helping you get prepared. And this is great timing as we have our first hurricane swell next week. All right. And then finally, this is just a brief update on some of our excess property developments. So Triton Square is in its, you know, moving along quite quickly. So that if you remember, that's about 304 units with indoor and outdoor amenities space. The project accomplished environmental remediation and repurposing of a vacant school. That was several million dollars just to even deal with the old building. It has a park and trail that will have public access, dedicated parking spaces, public access easement and signage, so people are aware that's available. Obviously, that's not open yet as it's under construction and it wouldn't be safe to be there currently, but once the project is, is open and safe, that will be available to folks. It's currently, again, under construction with anticipated completion within this year. And they're working on final building permits right now. And next, we have the Gold Star Highway Project. This was a public-private partnership between our town and the developer where we were able to leverage our parcel of land with the neighboring parcels. So we were able to put those two parcels together to make a bigger property so we could accomplish more public benefits with that. That also has a little over 300, 390 units, off-street parking, resident amenities, green space, and it has a very intentional natural buffer between that location and the green space around it. The estimated construction start for that is in spring 2026. Additionally, Colonel Ledyard is moving along. That's about 67 units and is in progress. And these are just some of the examples of our excess properties that are being utilized to accomplish multiple town goals and public benefits. And I'll stop there for now and dive into Pleasant Valley in our next, next, or the item that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Piazza. I know that was a whole lot of info and if you have any questions, now's the time for Economic Development. Yes, Rep. Perella?
Stand up on this one. So we had a lot of numbers there and we have, I did not know that the Triton Square had a designated space for park let access. That's excellent. The other question I had was what you just quoted, what were the total numbers of what's kind of, not quite finished, but about the total numbers on that?
So it was about 304 for Triton Square.
304 for Triton. And then what was the proposed on Gold Star?
Oh, for all of them, sorry. 390 roughly for Gold Star and about 67 for Colonel Ledyard.
Six, okay, so seven. And then going a little bit ahead, the proposal that we're going to be looking at tonight, which I won't talk because we're not on it technically, but just to compare, another 600 supposedly.
No, 300.
300 for the Pleasant Valley?
Correct.
So the paper article was possibly not correct on that?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Correct, it was not correct.
Okay. So then I'm looking at numbers because I'm caught, because, excuse me, because I'm trying to go forward and analyze with these plans that are partially, could be funded, like you said, through ARPA grants. Is there going to be, that's not correct. Okay, I thought you said something about some of the grant money.
Nope, so for our pivot grant for local businesses, that was ARPA funding.
Okay, I thought you said something ARPA. The next question I had was with all this, and I think I see John up there, we had talked a little bit about this before, what's the impact going to be on the infrastructure? Has that been addressed? Because that not only affects traffic EMS, but it also is going to affect the environmental part of that. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. The answer is yes, it is addressed. So essentially, we'll get into this when I go over Pleasant Valley too and just laying out that process. But essentially, that's what our planning and zoning process is for. So before we're even picking a developer, that team is doing their due diligence, they're figuring out what's possible, how to have responsible traffic flows, what the zoning is, how they'll have environmental impacts and how to make sure those don't take place. And that carries throughout the project. That's looked at through planning and zoning. It goes through, you know, our own council or our own commissions. And all of that's in place to make sure that each individual project doesn't have an overwhelming negative impact. So that's really what all the engineers are doing, all the architects are doing. So each project does go through that and that's kind of part of that overall, you know, collective fabric for the town. Each project goes through that and figures out how it can fit responsibly so that we can have growth and not be stagnant, make sure we're housing folks who need housing, getting amenities that people need, but also doing it in a responsible way so that we're not just having traffic jams. Does that answer your question?
That does, and I appreciate that because when we go back to, or when I go back to my constituents, I want to be able to say, look, right now, we have, this is in the process. So we want to be able to say, this is what's going to happen after. For example, where I live up on Long Hill Road, that area, we have two or three new businesses happening and everybody's all up in arms. Recently, some of them are almost complete. They do look pretty good. So it's definitely an improvement than a field that garbage was in, for example.
Yeah.
So I want to be able to go back and say, maybe this and maybe that, but this is why. So I'm glad that you explained that. And I also want to encourage, if I can just a little further here, the interactive that the planning department is going to be doing with the public. I try to tell people, come to the meetings, speak, come to the meetings. You have planning and zoning. That's your, one of your most important commissions of any commission, planning and zoning, inland wetlands, and people don't come. And then they complain. I had a discussion with a neighbor, I said, I wish you could have come to that meeting. There was one person there.
Yeah.
I can't, the RTM can't do everything, the council cannot do everything, and the planning department needs the interaction.
Yeah. And to that point, it's a great time to be involved and we've been encouraging folks to participate in our Groton 2035. It's the POCD for the next 10 years. So essentially that, you can find on greatergroton.com, all of our interactive events, there's always an open survey. And so exactly to your point, it's inviting folks to participate to see, and implement the zoning they want to see that then helps us grow responsibly for the next 10 years.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion for Economic Development? Yes, Rep. Obrey?
Thank you very much. It might be a little bit of a difficult or unpleasant question, but I'd like to ask it anyways. Could you tell us what's happening with Colonel Ledyard High, Colonel Ledyard School?
Yeah. I think overall, you know, construction takes time and with that, one, there's always permitting challenges and some different things going on, but we recently actually just followed up with that and it is moving ahead. It's under construction and in progress. So that's basically the, the update that we have.
They're working on it now?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yes.
The other thing, I intend to talk with everybody that I can, even that handsome guy up on the screen, but I'm hoping that the next property that we have, that we're going to do something with, that we would look for investors that want to either do condos that can be purchased or small homes. I think we're going to be well satisfied, sorry about that, well satisfied with what we have for apartments. But we need to be doing something that's going to reach out to the midline people. And condos are, it's an ownership, people can be proud of it, and we really do need it. And what was the other thing I said?
Small homes.
Small homes. Thank you. Man, if I get interrupted, the brain's gone. But I, I think that's very important. And we do have some schools that would be a beautiful location for either.
That's great feedback and I'll dive into a graphic in the next section, but essentially, it shows those checkpoints where you can provide that exact feedback to our council because they're who determine what happens with those parcels. So they'll say, you know, if we want housing, you could go so far as to say, we'd like to see these types. So that's, that's a great place to, to provide that because they're ultimately who's drafting that RFP and saying, these are objectives for this parcel. And condos are tough because they're amazing, but they're really hard to finance. After 2008, they just kind of got dropped off as an housing opportunity. So they're, they are great, but they're tough. And so a lot of times what we want requires a lot more incentive or flexibility. So we always get into that with our excess properties and what we need isn't always the most affordable.
Well, I've seen a couple of projects recently that CHFA has come in and put money into it. And I would think that would be an excellent thing to pursue while you're trying to find somebody that might be interested in doing it.
Definitely, definitely.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Like I'm telling you anything new.
It's always good to hear it, you know? All right, any other discussion for under Economic Development? All right, thank you for that presentation. All right, moving on.
I think John wanted to say something.
Oh, I think that's just the, is that your hand up or is it just the hand in the middle of the screen?
It's the cursor.
It's the hand in the middle of the screen. You've been, we've all been fooled. All right. And again, Director Reiner's here. I'm sure he'll pop in in a little while when we get onto our agenda item. There's no superintendent of schools report. Keep in tune with the meetings. They have them on Monday, they're online. Always good to, good to hear. Committee reports, there's no community development and services or education, but there is finance. So I'm going to tap our main man over here, Representative Powers. He's going to give us an update on the three items that are going to be discussed and some are just for chat and some we have to approve some things.
Correct. We have three items, the last item will be for chat.
Correct.
Okay, so we had a special meeting tonight, it was called Order at 6:31. Representative Dean Shinra, Fritchie, Gardner, Pulaski, and myself were present. Representative Norman and Umbrus were excused. I would ask Representative Pulaski to, I'm going to give her a piece of paper to read into the record, the bond ordinance for the construction of athletic fields.
Do you need that? Do you need that?
Yes, thanks.
Resolution adopting the ordinance appropriating 14,380,000 for the design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields. Resolve that Groton Town Council adopts the ordinance appropriating 14,380,000 for the design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields consisting of athletic field improvements, primarily at Fitch High School. And if funds remaining from said appropriation allows such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School. And authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation. And be it further resolved that the first sentence of Section 1 of the ordinance be revised to read, "Section 1, that the sum of 14,380,000 is appropriated for costs related to design and construction of athletic field improvements, primarily at Fitch High School. And if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allows such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School." The project. And be it further resolved that the ordinance is recommended to the representative town meeting per Rule 6.5.3. And be it further resolved that in accordance with Section 5.5.6.2 of the town charter, directs that the notice of adoption of the aforementioned ordinance contain a description of the ordinance prepared by the town attorney in lieu of the complete text of the ordinance. And I move this.
We went, she moved the.
Hold on before we go, we got a, we got a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion was made by Pulaski, seconded by DeGraffin, right? Okay, I'll turn it over back to you.
So our, our committee discussed things and Manager Burt explained the whole process that we were in here and the project length and how long we've been at doing the athletic field project. And this was a five-year, this is five years these people have had a committee to get together to do this. It's really a 10-year project. It goes all the way back to when I first got on the RTM and I was on the Parks and Rec Commission. So it's a good project. We, we talked about what was going to be involved in it. It was the football field, the track, the restrooms, parking lots, the bleachers. We talked about the bonding and what the bond rating was going to be and was going to be, I think, 3.36 is what we discussed. And this was, Representative Gardner asked about the risk of the bond with the economic times we were in and the things that we discussed in committee were about where we were with the school budget and how it impacts the overall tax base of the town. We took a vote, we voted to pass it. It was five in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstained.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for the appropriation 2025-635 bond ordinance for design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yes, Representative Obrey?
A little slow tonight. What we're doing, thank you, really slow. What we're doing is approving this to go to a vote in November.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, just wanted to make that real clear to everybody that we're not making any decisions. We're just saying, okay, it can go forward to the next step.
Correct.
That's a decision though, I would, I would say, you know? We have the.
We're making a decision to approve going forward with the resolution, or with a referendum. Correct. I should have been more clear about that to you.
That's okay, I can't hear you anyways.
I should have been more clear to you about it being a referendum that we're all going to, okay? I just, I just think that everybody reads the documents that we get and, you know, I'm sorry.
I was pretty sure and I have read it and I do want to.
No, it's in there.
It's always good to make it very, very clear to the people, we're not making this decision.
Correct. This has been one in the making for five-plus years. Like I agree with Rep. Powers. We were discussing this a long time ago when I sat in the RTM in those seats as well. You know, I, if, if somebody on this body or at home is interested in the deliberations that have happened over the years, GMTV has all of the Athletic Fields Task Force discussions online for you to watch. And again, you can also watch the town council meetings over the past few months with their discussions on this item as well. For the people that are new here and don't know, we've done ordinances in the past and those ordinances, ordinances were legislative. And when it came to us, all we had the opportunity to do was veto those ordinances with a two-thirds majority vote. This one is a simple majority vote for approval of this bond ordinance to move it to the, for referendum on November 4th.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
My pleasure. Yes, Representative Perella?
Just a quick question for the town manager. How far are we paid down for the school referendum?
That's going to be a while. However, as you look at our, we've had some other bonds that, we've got more bonds than just the schools. They're generally, even the schools are generally coming down, you know, a million plus a year. They've been tending to drop in cost. So, you know, obviously, they're not tied in together, but largely, those bond savings would, would pay for much of this. And just so you know, some of the costs, now, year one's only, of the bonds, a 15-year bond, year one would, and until you go out to bid, you don't really know exactly what the costs are. These are what our financial advisor is estimating at this point. Year one payment would only be 647,000-ish. The highest payment the town would make is in year three at 1.8 million. And that's also the highest amount that, that would be towards the taxpayers, taking, you know, not taking into account any savings from any other bonds. That's about $39 per 100,000 assessed value. So basically, 39 times 2.5 for that highest year. And then it starts coming back down with the final year, the year 15 being $23 per 100,000. So again, year three is the highest payment we would make, but again, largely offset by savings in existing bonds.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that because I think that just is something that has to be looked under the umbrella of everything. I'm not against sending it to referendum, however, probably will be abstaining because I work for the school system, so.
And the next steps are, you know, assuming, would it be approved here? The town council will take this up again on the 26th at their COW. They have to, at that meeting, recommend approval of the language for the question that would go out to the November vote, as well as the explanatory text. There'll be a two-page sheet that gives the number of costs, the estimated cost per year, what's being done, the language, all that stuff. So that will be on the agenda for the 26th.
Any other discussion? Representative Casper?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is, I'm a little off the topic right now whether approve this or not. I was just disappointed that the whole push of this is only for youth. It seems like if you're going to put, you're looking at fields and everything, they should be multi-use or multi-generational. Already, our schools are 60% of our budget, which benefits 10% of our population. And now we're adding more on top of that without adding benefit to the rest of the population. I mean, we, you know, one example is, you know, it would be nice to have a band show and there could be evening concerts in the summer. The high school bands could do their shows and some, they even use it for. And some, they even use it for graduations.
One thing to keep in mind, for instance, with the stadium is it'll be a multi-use field, much more robust than what's there now. You could hold band competitions then, which we can't now. There'll be a lot more activities that hopefully would benefit the entire community.
We'll see.
I think in the proposal for across the street, we were seeing it, there was a shell that was proposed that might be built there so that there could be community activities. Do you remember that?
Oh, the, the earlier larger plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that, is that still included as part, yes, it is still included? Been a while since I've looked at that. Now, again, that's not part of this phasing, though.
Well, it would be if it's across the street and that's part of that.
The first year's only the high school, the stadium.
Oh, okay.
If there's any other expenditures as the text states, that could go towards other projects.
Right now, the, right now, the tentative plan is three more phases after this. Of course, the next council could decide, let's go for the, all three phases at once. It's up to, you know, whatever the council wants to do and then the RTM.
Well, if we live long enough and you keep going, we might get a shell.
If we get a shell, I'll play my trumpet there. How about that? All right?
We'll be in.
Fantastic. All right. Yes, Representative Wells?
It's been a while, but I recall this body approved a study for a swimming pool. And basically, we were having the option of using the swimming pool at the oral school for a number of years until they developed it fully. And so, and we voted for a study to find out, you know, how many are the interest in having a swimming pool. And I do recall one representative who wanted to keep the oral school just the way it is or in some unrealistic way accused me of being a traitor to my district for voting for that, that study. So I'm wondering if we're ever, we're ever considering having a swimming pool.
Not at this stage. And that funding for the study was not actually approved. There's not any funding set aside for the study at this point.
Oh, it didn't happen, huh?
No.
Gosh, I remember we voted, I hear I was accused of being a traitor to my district. Give me a chance.
Anything else, Rep. Wells? Okay. Is there any other discussion on two zero two five dash six three five? Perella?
Just, there was a question brought up by someone about the reevaluation. And what year is that going to be done? This next group, the next round? Two years?
Somewhere around there. I forget exactly. Time flies somewhere, yeah.
So then the question would be, if we, if the public decides to vote for this, can, what power in the town would be able to, if it gets out of control, to stop part of the project? Can you hold part of the project? Or is there a timeline?
Well, by that time, you're probably well into the phase one. At any stage, though, you know, you, you could approve the referendum language and the bids could come in double the cost that you'd naturally have to dial it back at that stage and look at other options. But at each decision point, you've got just, you know, options, so.
Any other discussion? Anyone online discussion? Oh, we have Rep. Whitney here, by the way. So we have twenty-three members present. All right. Seeing no more hands, I'm gonna call for a vote on item two zero two five, six three five, bond ordinance for design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields. The amount is fourteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? One abstention. Motion carries. Twenty-two in favor.
Two abstentions.
Two? There's another one? Oh, okay. Twenty-one in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions. Two.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
So our-
Moving along, sir.
So our next item of business was twenty twenty-five dash six seventy-one dash three, Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant. And it's FYE twenty-six. I asked Representative Gardner to read that in, if he so would for me, please. The resolution. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program Grant. Whereas the Town of Groton Police Department has applied for and received one hundred thousand dollars in pool funding from the State of Connecticut Nuclear Safety Emergency Program, NSCP. And whereas this funding will be used for electronic equipment upgrades to our current emergency operations center. And whereas remaining grant funds will be applied to EMD and deputy EMD salaries and drill supplies, now therefore be it resolved, the town council authorizes Town Manager John Burt to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program. To accept the grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars and to refer the item to the RTM per rule six point five point three. So moved.
Thank you.
Motion was moved by Gardner M., seconded by Perella. And I hand it back over to the chair.
So there was, this is pretty much self-explanatory once we read the resolution. And we asked if there was any matching funds and there is not. It's a state grant, so we voted five to zero to zero to approve, accepting the grant and allowing Manager Burt to go forward with it.
Very well. All right. I open up the floor for discussion on item two zero two five dash six seven one, Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant.
And just to mention, we've had several, quite a few of these in the past. It's a pretty standard grant every year.
Okay. And no matching funds?
No matching funds, no.
People like to hear-
It offsets some payroll costs and then the rest is the O.C.
Okay. And if for some reason there is surplus money in the budget because of the offset, that'll go back to the channel fund.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on two zero two five dash six seven one, Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant. The amount is for a hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yep.
All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries unanimously, twenty-three zero zero. All right. And we got one more.
Our last item was twenty twenty-five dash five twenty-one dash seven. It's a selection of a project concept development team for the former Pleasant Valley School. So this is, this was just a discussion for all of us to go through.
And I believe Ms. Piazza, you're gonna be going over that right now. Was that correct?
Yeah. That'll save us all kinds of time.
Okay. And let's not forget, once Ms. Piazza's done, we gotta approve these minutes. I'm gonna forget, so.
All right. Hi, everybody. Okay. So just picking up where we left off on the update. Again, there's no action required from you this evening. It's just an update on where we are. So for the town's disposition process, they, town council adopted a new, excuse me, policy of essentially how the town would dispose of their excess property. This was in July, twenty twenty-three. In September, twenty twenty-four, they approved the release of the Pleasant Valley Request for Proposals, which was one of the first excess properties to be subject to this new process that I'll walk you through. And we also reformatted the RFP to help align with the process. And that closed in January. Then we moved into essentially our property sale review committee process, of which there's two RTM members on. And I'll walk you through where we went from there. Oh, no. Okay. There we go. So don't worry, you do not have to read all this text. It's small on the screen. But what I wanted to show you is essentially, this is a graphic depiction of our town's disposition process. As you can see, there's a lot of steps. So our team broke it down into phases to make it easier to understand, so that you can see what we're doing in each phase and what the outcome is and how it plugs into that next step. So just across the top there in green is the first phase, which is the property review. This is where we have a committee determine if the property should be excess, if it, it will serve the town in that way and what those benefits could be. The blue section or the, the second phase is identification of the public benefit preferences. And as Rep. O'Bry mentioned, you know, this is where, when you have ideas of what a property could be, this is where this is identified by the town council. Then we're moving into the third phase, the orange, which is the project concept and development partner selection. This is, once everyone's decided what the property should be, we've received proposals. This is where we're choosing who was the best and fits that request at the best level. This is what we just finished and we're talking about tonight. And then you take all of those ideas that were discussed and agreed upon and move into the legal agreement so that the town has the teeth it needs to say, this is what's happening with the property, you know, while it's being constructed and it's the outcome that we all agreed to. So again, you don't have to see all that small text, but overall, you can see those big check marks. We're at the end of the third phase for Pleasant Valley. All right. So the request for proposals is a really big piece of that. So that's what I mentioned. This is where the town council says, what could we do with this excess property that can accomplish a lot of goals, the town's goals, you know, with utilizing this parcel? So the top section, the policy goals, this is regardless of the property. This is the town's policy that, this is why we want to utilize excess property. And in particular, we're looking to grow the town's grand list and help generate tax revenue. And then that's just one of the main reasons, but that's highlighted there. And then below that, this is what's specific to Pleasant Valley. So the council also has the opportunity to say, because every parcel is very different based on its size, its limitations, its constraints, its opportunities, also its location, they can say, okay, Pleasant Valley specifically would be a great fit for this based on its zoning, et cetera. So a few items called out there are, they asked for it to have housing that had market rate and affordability available. And they also looked at the preservation or creation of some public space or park space so that they could accomplish two different goals with this parcel, as it's pretty big and it's sixteen acres. All right. So once we received all those requests for proposals and the developers saying, we saw the list that you wanted, we know the criteria that you've asked us to meet, here's our ideas, we moved into the Property Sale Review Committee, or PSRC. I won't go through all of the names, but that's essentially who is on it. We had a council representation, RTM representation, EDC, and staff. And they go through a very thorough process. It's basically four, maybe five meetings, depending on the time needed, to essentially score those proposals, have discussions, come up with any clarifying questions they, they want answered in addition to what was provided to them. And they can hold interviews for the top candidates. They went through all of this and they arrived at a finalist that they recommended to town council. Then moving over to the column on the right, the town council reviewed that decision and they decided to move ahead with PSRC's recommendation, which is Spinnaker Real Estate Partners. Then the council opened it up for public comment and we held a public hearing. And we were very clear to identify what information was available at that phase. So one thing that we find is with this policy, we're trying to involve people throughout the whole process, not just at the end, once the decisions are made. But it's also really important to understand, when you're in the middle of the process, only so much information's available at that time. So right now, we are at the concept phase. It hasn't been designed, it hasn't been engineered. We're essentially picking a partner to then move through those technical steps with. Then we held a, hosted a presentation and informational Q and A with Spinnaker so folks could ask them questions directly. Then we had a second public hearing and town council moved to select Spinnaker and now we're at RTM. One thing we also did as staff, we wanted to make sure folks had as much information as possible to inform those public hearings. So we launched a Greater Groton page. You can go there. It will be up through the life of the project. We lay out the disposition process, each step we're at, what information's available at what time. We introduce the Spinnaker team, how they've met the goals of the request for proposals, also the timeline. And there's also a survey to ask how the information is helpful or not. And our intent there was for this to be a one-stop shop of information throughout the life of the project. One thing we find a lot is misinformation comes up really easy and really quick. So we wanna have one place to point everyone so they can know where they can get the facts on what's happening with the property. Thank you. So a brief snapshot of this project is essentially, it is proposed as a suburban, walkable village with much-needed housing at varying income levels, including proposed market rate and affordable, also natural area preservation and publicly accessible recreation space. So you can see how they hit all those things we asked for in that list. And the overarching objective as well as place-making and community building through quality design. So the bolded list below are the main components that they hit, really high-quality design style, a housing component, the recreation and park space. They also added, wasn't even asked for, but added an additional community engagement piece around what the park will look like for the public, sustainability features, and then overall project performance, which is really important to the town, which is that it's done in a timely manner. It does contribute to the grand list. And there's also environmental remediation. There's several million dollars of work that has to be done to deal with the existing school and they proposed that as part of their project. So just a few examples of Spinnaker's work. They're a local developer out in Norwalk, Connecticut and have a lot of experience. So some of these obviously are a much larger scale than we would have, so please don't let that scare you. Mostly it's just to show the quality of design and especially on the bottom right, this is largely an example of kind of how that feel is when they talk about a suburban, walkable village. Ooh, excuse me. I'm gonna skip over this one. And what's important about this is the town was really interested in high-quality design and not just kind of a large Costco-shaped building. And so they have a lot of experience with and have proposed essentially that, a feel that looks like a main street that developed over time. So there's a lot of character to it, there's a lot of place-making to it versus just, here's a large housing development. These are just some, some high-level sketches essentially and for the initial concept. And then finally, we just have the site plan. Again, this is very, very high level, but they essentially just lay out, you can see how they'll have the landscaping throughout, the different heights, the, I'm curious if I have a laser on this, I don't know if I do, but the left side, the public space, as well as additional amenities space on the right. And again, just that is a concept at this point. We would then be moving through next steps. So I have one more slide for you. Thank you. So to wrap that up, you can see again, we've knocked out those three phases. And now we're moving into the term negotiation. So one thing that's really great about our, having excess property is we, as a town, have the ability to leverage that property to get public benefits from the developer that we're working with. The list that we've asked for is very expensive. We want park space, which doesn't pay for itself. We want affordable housing, which doesn't pay for itself. So really what we're looking at now during that negotiation is how we can leverage our land as a town to help offset the costs of those expensive benefits that we've asked for. So we move into negotiations. That'll talk about the purchase price, potential tax abatement, what the affordability component will be. And then once we get that agreed upon with our town council and the Spinnaker team, we move into that final document. And then that guides the rest of the project. I think this is really important for folks to know, so they feel comfortable with how much control we have. So a lot of times folks get nervous, like, well, how do we know it's gonna be built? How we all just talked about? It all comes down to this legal agreement, which guides the rest of the project. Then it moves through engineering, all of the technical steps, design, permitting. And it also comes back to town council again. It goes through planning and zoning. And if there's any substantial changes with the PZC, it would come back again to town council. And everything, again, has to meet those final terms before it even begins construction. So that's it for now. I know we'll have some questions, so I'll leave that up for now, just in case we use some of those graphics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Piazza.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And if I could just request, if we have not received this slideshow, can we get it distributed and also put it in our agenda packet so that the public can see it too, please?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So I open up the floor for discussion. Again, we are not making any decisions tonight. This is just for transparency purposes and for the public and ourselves to digest what's been going on. Again, I thank Director Reiner and his staff for putting this together. It's been a long time coming for some of us who've been involved in governance for a while. So I open up the floor for discussion. Representative Aubrey.
Just a quick question. Is this presentation that you gave to us tonight online?
It is, all of these slides have been used throughout different town council or the public hearing presentations. So they are available in different agenda packets, but we'll, we'll attach it to this one as well. And the process graphic is available on greatergroton.com. That one I showed, that has all the steps.
I'm sorry, say that end part again?
Sure. The graphic that talks about the entire process, that is on greatergroton.com, on that Pleasant Valley page I mentioned. So, everything we talked about is there. Does that answer?
Thank you. It's a little hard to read all of it, so it'd be nice to be able to go over it again. I got to tell you, you remind me of John when he first started talking at meetings here too. And he went, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da.
Sorry, I come from a very large agency where you had like five minutes to explain a $20 million project to a legislator and that was it. So I'm used to, I have to go very fast. Trying to slow down.
And again, folks, if any of you all have any questions, please forward any questions you may have about what we've heard and after we take a look at the slideshows, when we get them emailed or it's on the agenda packet for this, this month's meeting, any questions you may have. Town Manager Burt's been great at getting those questions answered from the department. I know I've been watching these meetings and I just wanted to clarify, there's, there has not been a set rate on the amount of affordable housing that's going to be in this project. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that'll be part of the next stage and it will be flexible enough, depending on what amount of funding they receive. But there'll be a minimum requirement and most likely also what we're aiming for.
Threshold.
But no matter what, you know, we have to have this.
And I, based on what I heard, it was anywhere between 10 to 20 percent? Somewhere 10 on the low, 20 on the high?
Correct.
Okay. And that, and that decision would be made by the town council?
Yes, ultimately, yeah. And it largely will come down to funding resources too. So it'll be, you know, if we apply for this and get it, this is what will take place.
Okay, thank you. Representative, oh, yeah.
I was just going to mention, when I send out my report tonight, I'll actually send you a link to the Pleasant Valley page.
Rep. Perella?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Say the project goes through and you have the maximum potential for a property, which of course, the town would want to do that for revenue on that, on that side of it. What would happen if per se Navy families or other families came in and they had, say, two children each? So you have, if you have a one-parent family or a two-parent family. Now you have four people, let's just say, average it out, times six, 2,400, is that correct? Did I multiply right? Approximately. So now you have those 2,400 people, some of them are going to have to have schooling. What's the town's plan to develop? Are they going to reopen Mary Morrison? Is that going to be enough buildings and schooling? Are you going to be able to have Viscovi, Navy, Pleasant Valley District Fire Department be able to cover that? Is the water plan going to tax the reservoir more? Or is it going to be planned in there? All those questions.
Sure. And it comes back kind of to what I mentioned before is all the considerations that come through. That's what the zoning is there for, looking at water, looking at traffic. And this project will be required to meet the WRPD requirement, which is a 20% set aside of its land in natural state. Like it has to hit all of the zoning that's already in place to protect water resources, natural resources, et cetera. Director Reiner may want to speak more to the schools, but I think the chance of every single person having two kids would be high. But also, that would be a good problem to have because we can start adjusting accordingly. But I think, I'll let Director Reiner speak to it a little bit more. But there is a, will be a variety of sizes for the units, which may be family, which may also be studio. But essentially, that's all taken into account and as far as like how all of that planning goes. Director Reiner, did you have any additional information for that?
Yeah, sorry, just trying to get off mute. Sorry that I'm not there in person, everybody. I have COVID and I didn't want to share it. So I thought you'd rather have me just be on the camera. So, when it comes to school-age kids, the majority of these units, I believe, are actually going to be studios, ones, and then maybe a few two-bedroom units. And when you start looking at the types of people that are attracted to those types of units, you're not seeing families with two kids in studios and one-bedrooms.
Yes, Mr. Burt?
Just to add in, also Director Reiner's meeting, we're in regular contact with the Board of Ed in terms of the schools. For instance, John's on the agenda. I think it's for next Monday for the Board of Ed to talk about some of these same topics.
Right.
Yes, and I'm going to give a very thorough overview that night about all of the development activity that's been happening over the last number of years. And essentially, of all the multifamily developments that we have, there are incredibly few, if any, three-bedroom units being proposed. And that's where you start seeing family units. Most of them right now are looking at studios, ones, and then a few twos, because that's what is the biggest demand in the market right now. We have a lot of single-family housing or some larger apartments. When we look at what the market's really demanding right now, it's those smaller types of units.
Well, I appreciate that, just a quick follow-up. And the question is, though, if that changes in a year or two and by the time the project's done, the projections that are being done now could change dramatically. And the reason why I bring that up is I think some people brought up the question of the type of housing. And that was one of the things I think you had put, you know, in one of your letters, you know, that you had put out. And then you had stressed about the middle housing. So it's kind of, I think we have to really analyze it. I'm not saying it's a bad project. I really think you eventually will need another school property. But you know, I don't think we're seeing it right now. I think in five years, it could turn the other way. And you want families to move in too, not just the single people. So I think that has to be looked at in the project and the use of the land. And that's why I bring it up, to be fair, because you may have units that you cannot rent out. I understand the Triton Place, I don't know exactly factually that it's not being rented out as proposed, as hoped. Is that correct on that?
It's actually going very well right now. It's doing well.
So that changed recently then?
We keep hearing that rumor.
That project's going really well, as far as rentals are concerned.
So, yeah. And what are the people that are going in? Are they just the high-end wage earners? Or, what's the average cost of one of those, so you know that?
I think they're in the $2,500 unit, $2,500 per unit. I don't have the exact numbers. Again, it's not a town property anymore. This is private property.
Right, so you don't have exact figures on that? No, and I understand that. I'm just saying, the reality is, is I certainly don't make that amount that I could ever afford to do that. I'm struggling to keep my own house. And I have to also consider that I'm looking at people that are on fixed incomes. And if we don't do that, then we're not being fair to the entire population. And I do appreciate and respect what you are trying to do with, with the planning department, don't get me wrong. But we do have to face that. And I understand you want to maximize the property and you're going to get tax revenue. But are you really going to get the tax revenue? Because you may not be able to rent them out.
And one thing to keep in mind too, is that this project will have affordable units and it's really important, it really doesn't matter how good the intention is for development, it's still going to cost the same. So even if you want a project that is 20% AMI, is, you know, the most affordable thing on the planet, the labor, the materials, all of it still costs the same and you have to figure out how to pay for it. So a best practice is combining those things, so that you have market rate and affordable. Because like with this project, the market rate will help offset the money that you'd be losing on the affordable units. So it's really good to have a mix. And something to keep in mind too, is that not every parcel can solve every single problem in town. So this one's approaching several big things. We do need single and two-to-three bedroom units. We do need affordable and we do need park space. So it's three in one with 16 acres.
And I do appreciate the follow-up on that because this project may be a pilot project that might be for future projects that you're, that are going very quickly. Because we're moving so quickly into this housing problem. I want to make sure that in five or 10 years, you know, that's a lot of traffic, that's a lot of, a lot more people. So I understand the push to make all the businesses ready for all these people. But the impact on the living situation, we have to look at the whole picture.
And one other point to make, in September, we'll be having a couple of meetings with our Planning and Zoning Commission, focusing specifically on housing and having some of our experts that we work with presenting on that. Because I think there's still a lot of questions, head-scratters and everything else that people have about housing, the need for housing, the cost of housing. So we're going to bring some folks in to talk about that as it relates specifically to Groton to try to dispel some other myths about the cost of housing, affordable housing, starter homes. You know, I was talking with the developer a few weeks ago and he said, oh yeah, we can build starter homes right now. They started about $500,000 because that's what the cost of land, labor, and materials are. We're not getting starter homes for $250,000 anymore. They just, they don't exist because of land cost, material, labor. So, but again, we'll talk about all that more in detail because that's housing versus Pleasant Valley.
Great, thank you for that. And I'm hoping the other communities are listening in other towns because Groton can't take it all, and Groton cannot do it all.
I just wanted to add one point. I know through the discussions that you all had on town council with deliberations, there was some contention about the open space segment and whether or not it should have been kept by the town or given to the, to the developer. This is also a need that we've already discussed here about, well, the town manager's report discussing the need for parks and open space play in District Four. This meets that requirement, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And then, the one piece that I thought was very intriguing is that part of this RFP is going to mandate that there's some open space park. They're going to maintain it, they're going to pay for it. We don't have to pay for it and we don't have to maintain it. Is that correct?
Yes, so one of the great things about it, it kind of comes down to my last example of market rate can help offset affordable housing. It's the same with the park space. So if we were to take off a piece of that parcel and just say, we own this, we're paying for it. We're paying for the park, you know, infrastructure, maintaining it over time. And parks are tough because they cost a lot of money and then they hemorrhage a lot of money. Then they're not making any money. So, of course, they have their, their value, an incredible amount of value that's not monetary. But again, as, you know, working for the town, we have to figure out how to pay for it. So this is a great opportunity where we are working through that legal agreement to work with the developer of how that, what that looks like. And essentially, it will be publicly accessible in perpetuity, but they will also maintain it. So that's no longer on the taxpayer for the maintenance for that park. Where if it were just a park on its own, that wouldn't be the case.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion on this item? Discussion only. All right, I'm going to close that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Reiner. I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
All right. And again, we're going to get this document. It's going to be put on our agenda for this month's meeting. Mr. Burt is giving us the link to all of the information that we were given so that you can consume it. And if you have any questions, forward it to me. Forward it to Mr. Burt and we'll pass that information along and get you your answers, okay? All right, if we could just move the minutes?
So, I make a motion to move the minutes.
Second.
All right, motion was moved by Powers S., seconded by Perella. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chair Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
My pleasure. All right, so, public safety, no committee, no report. I know there was a discussion, I'm not going out of order, but there was a discussion asked about the protests. Town Manager Burt's going to get us to the answer on that at some point.
I've already sent an email to the chief. I'll report out and say.
Thank you very much. All right, public works, no committee, no report. Parks and Rec did not have a committee and report, rules and procedures as well. All right, moving on, liaison reports. Tag, you're it, sir.
Well, no, no formal meeting. However, I did have an informal meeting with the pro Todd at the bar at Par Four.
Okay.
And was expressing that I've, I've reported that the, the revenue seems to have been flat going into the summer. And he said, it is flat, but it's flat at a higher level. So I'm expecting in September, we'll have a better, a good report.
All right, thank you, Representative Wells. And Representative Aubrey, did you have anything for economic development?
They didn't have.
There was no meeting this month. But can I put another little bit of information on the floor?
Is it regarding liaisons? Or could we wait till other business?
I'll wait, I'll wait.
All right, thank you. Just want to chug along here. All right, any other liaison reports? All right, moving on, we're on budget discussion. Any items on budget discussion? Budget, budget? All right.
We're only about two months away from our internal part starting.
All right, so two months and they're already going to start making the numbers up. So if there's something that we've discussed over these past months when we were approving budget items, please forward all of your concerns and questions and comments to Town Manager Burt so he can take care of that for us. All right, any other discussion on budget? All right, other business? Any other business? Representative Aubrey.
Okay, I just wanted to put a little plug in and also a request. I'm hoping everybody's been down to Eska Point to see our new fish.
Gill.
Called Gill. And that was a project of the Beautification Committee, paid for by the money that comes from the nip bottles. And so it kind of went full circle because it's, if you read the plaque, they're trying to remind people that, not, only thing to remember, the only thing that needs to be in the water of the fish, keep the plastic out and everything else. So I, I think, Missy House was in charge of it. She did a marvelous job of pulling it together. And the other thing I would just like to make, Beautification Committee has done a great job of going around to many of the town buildings, getting them to look so much better. And we have other areas that we do too. But the problem is, once you get them in, you need more help to keep them up. And thank you for very much for the, your coming out to help. But we need people to come out that would just take one area and do the weeding and the watering. And it would make everything so much more beautiful. So if anybody has some spare time, you know, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off that, I couldn't agree with you more, Rep. Aubrey. And again, thank you for spearheading that, for the length of time that you've been doing it. We, we've had very good success on beautifying some of those areas, giving it some curb appeal. Myself, Council Rusk, Council Good, who used to be on the RTM, we spent two hours up at one location, and, you know, we pulled out the weeds, added some mulch, and it looks fantastic. And there are so many other places, if there's a place near and dear to your heart, in your district, let us know and we'll try to help out to get it going. But we do need stewards to, you know, keep that going over, over time, or else it's gonna get overgrown again.
I just wanted to add some.
Yes, sir.
Just, I agree with all that. I want to add one more plug for the Beautification Committee. You may or may not know, we have an awful lot of weddings take place in Town Hall, and Beautification Committee just had a really nice mural background done in Town Hall to take photos in front of. You'll see this in my report, but like this really nice altar, you know, background that's along the wall. So if you're in the courthouse in the, in the Town Hall in the main hallway, take a look at it, there'll be a picture in your report.
Yeah, and if you want to renew your vows, it's a great place to go. Take a picture.
It's so nice to have, I do a lot of weddings, many of them at Town Hall, but it's so nice to have a nice place for them to have the ceremony, take nice pictures. And it's just a wonderful effort on the part of, John was very helpful, and his assistant was very helpful, as they stood in their office saying, don't you think this would be a good idea?
And the artist was fantastic.
Whatever Leon wants, Leon gets.
All right. So if you need to get hitched, go under the flower hoop. All right, is there any other discussion, other business, before I go to agenda item M? All right, you know, Groton lost a great, great person in the last month, Rita Schmidt. She's been involved in the community for decades. And again, just keep her and her family in your hearts, thoughts, and prayers. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna call for an adjournment.
So, motion adjourned.
Moved.
Begging.
Moved by Powers S., seconded by Barrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for coming. We'll see you tentatively in September.